Not being in the A's home call at all previously and starting here, I went five days a week in the office. Plus, I'd lived up here for four days out of the week. It was that kind of paradigm shift. It's like whiplash. You have no, I mean, I'm still trying to get used to it. But yeah, I can understand how powerful this could be.
I know. I powered through. This is clean.
Hey, you're a leader for a reason. Matt, we know. We know what it takes to pull together. Well, thank you all for taking the time and joining us in person. It's, I'm so glad to see everybody. It's, this is kind of amazing. So I'm just really happy that the majority of you guys make it. I hope that this is an opportunity to, for you to be candid, for you to ask any questions, share any of your concerns or confusion about anything. This is a safe space and we just, you know, we're really invested in wanting everybody to feel comfortable with the content. And if you, if you need anything, you know, something just doesn't make sense, please let us. That's the, that's the hope. And then what we also are hoping that we can do is identify, is there anything else that we need to be covering and training, which we will, based on some questions that you cover, stuff that may come out of the discussion today. So I'll be keeping track of that when I'll ask again.
Now, thank you for setting this up personally. I need this thing.
A refresher is never a bad thing.
This isn't a refresher.
Or just.
This is an intro.
And then I guess after we kick off the meeting, we'll go through introductions. Alright, so I guess it's up to you, Matt, to start on the meeting.
Alright, study session, May 10th is helpful. I'll start introductions. Matt Comstock, chairman.
Jeanne Sutrien.
Tom Howard, Hanson.
Oh, I'm Karen.
Jeff Wobert with Town Planning.
Josh Alaba.
Um, Michael O'Neal from Ayers Associates.
Jessica Martin, Community Self-Intervention.
Matthew Isier, Plain Mission.
Alright, we're good.
Alright. Well, thank you all for having us here. My name is Josh Alaba. I'm a planner with Ayers Associates. I have a little over ten years of experience in the public sector and now almost a year on the private sector. So I've worked with a lot of communities down the front range. I've actually done a handful of planning commissioner trainings for my commissioners when I have staff at those various jurisdictions. I do a lot with mentoring, youth engagement outreach. I sit on our state APA board as well. So I stay pretty active and up to date with just helping individuals, everyone understand planning and help to elevate our profession throughout the state and region.
Uh, Mike Trolle, obviously met me at least virtually before. So I'm, I'm here, I'm taking, gonna come back up Josh and take notes. And as we go through, if there's any questions or any fault that we need to take care of. But I do the economic development and urban planning role for our team, for the Ayers team.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming up. Perfect. If there's any issues with anything in here, it's my fault.
Yes, sir.
Quickly, I want to actually, unless you get your name, I just wanted to know like your years of doing on the planning commission, if you're back out in that experience, because I can help me out a little bit. It's up there.
Been on the commission since this board was formed two years ago. Currently private business owner around a brewery, but worked in architecture and engineering for seventy years.
Okay.
Both of these communities.
Just kind of work around the room.
Oh, Janine, two years? Two years?
Sure.
Retired, currently retired. And prior to that was healthcare and commercialization in the economic setting. Long career of lots of different things, but did, for Indiana University, ran their strategic planning facilities division. So I'm pretty good with the real plans, where I used to be.
Uh, Matt Comstock. So I joined the planning commission when it was still the Estes Valley Planning Commission. And then when the IGA disbanded, you know, at least before in this one, I held on. So it's been two and a half years probably.
Um, or Hanson, I started on the planning commission two years ago. And I'm retired after spending forty years in neurology, oceanography, and climate research.
Awesome. Thank you all for that, obviously. Staff, stop.
Staff.
And I know you guys.
Staff.
And this is fairly informal, so if you have questions while we're gone, or if you don't like something in the planning, throw your hands in the air. So general agenda, kind of break down what we can talk about. Start at kind of a high level and work our way down into the plan aspect. And so really want to cover, you know, what planning resources you have available to you here that you use as part of your analysis, your review of the projects. And then also talk about staff's roles, kind of where they fit in on the process and what they kind of do behind the scenes, where sometimes we're elected officials to do or do not know all those little intricate details that happen behind the scenes. Also dive into a little bit what the commission's rules are. Especially when you're looking at planning, you know, what, what should you do? When you get that first email with the packet, materials, things like that, the kind of progression moving forward towards meeting. And then kind of dive into a little bit for meeting applications, talk over a couple of examples that was provided. Have a couple of handouts and then we'll probably do a little bit on the board. So if we get to a point where we need to, yeah, take a look, I'll kind of go over there and I'll use our blueprint experts here on the pens to kind of lead that discussion, right? So, and then we'll kind of wrap up with final questions or any other discussion, dialogue, things you want to learn more about, make that kind of steps.
I might have some handouts too. I just realized I'll go grab them and talk about them immediately.
Awesome. So planning resources, so these are the documents that you, again, have available to you. They're the townwide documents that you use to help inform your decisions, guide your decisions. It's really kind of guided by the blueprint for the Estes Park area. I would like, so the first one, high level, big plan, is the comprehensive plan. The big things in there are your plan, use plan, you know, what avenues, activities you want to see within the community. And then also where are the vision goals established in those plans? And I know you're in the current comprehensive plan update process right now, which is fantastic, which also for some of you may be like, do we use the old plan? Do we use the new language coming out with the new plan? Where do I go from here? Especially with your analysis. And I would say, so generally you have an existing comprehensive plan in place, but you also know the evolution of the community and what's happened during retirement and what you should be balancing as you're reviewing projects. And staff usually do a great job of helping provide some of that insight, some of that guidance with their reports to help kind of get you, get you thinking through the various goals or those visions that are out there in the comprehensive plan. I do emphasize comprehensive plan a lot because often times communities do all this effort to get a comprehensive plan and that sits on the shelf. Planners might use it at the staff level, but then it doesn't always go beyond that. Or it might be the staff report, you have meets the goals, meets the vision, check the box. But really, does it help you drive the type of developments and the type of growth you want to see here within Estes Park? So comprehensive plan is the planning commissioner's documents. Within your code, that is your charge to approve the amendments, approve the process. So it is a very important document. And since you're going through that process right now, you have a lot of opportunities to help shape and inform how that works with your community. Next is the downtown plan, or if you have any other adopted area plans. That obviously would have the unique criteria for contact sensitive planning. Big fan of contact sensitive planning because that one-size-fits-all approach has always been a struggle in the planning sector and planning world. And so what is unique about this special area, you know, downtown here is very different compared to the outskirts of Estes Parks. So how are you planning for those different areas and how are you using those downey ones?
Yeah. So the one thing to keep in mind though, when you're looking at these is there are things that are statutory requirements. They're baked into state law, like the comprehensive plan zoning regulations. Your downtown plan is just a policy document. It's approved, so it's not, it doesn't have, say, the, let's say, called the force of law, which is maybe older states. But that's, that's just an approved policy by the town board. So it, you're not, you're not required to follow it in the same sense you are necessarily like a zoning code or, or, or planning. Now, if you were to go for like a DDA, a downtown development authority, I know urban rules are not, are somewhat forbidden here, but there are roles that are built in the state statute where the, where you have advisory authority in crafting the plans of development. And those, in those, you know, that, in that process where you have a defined role, your plan right now is just simply, in, in, it's simply just a policy document without kind of the force of law. So I, I don't know if that's an important distinction or something to understand, but I think, but, but, you know, part of, part of trying to, you know, because, you know, you have, you're, as a quasi-adjudicial body, you have, you know, there are roles that are baked right in the state statute that you need to follow and others that are just more, just approved, you know, approved more by, I won't call it political, but it's approved policy of a board to.
Yeah, that's a great point. And to get teeth on a plan like a downtown plan or corridor plan is to adopt some references within your code and point back out to that plan that has criteria or guidelines that you want to follow.
The downtown plan, having been adopted by the trustees, is useful to provide cover for us.
Correct.
Well, I don't see the development code here anywhere.
Zoning regulations, so that's kind of where, that's kind of a more broad approach, zoning regulations, development code.
Okay, I guess I thought of those as a subset of development code.
Okay. Yeah, there's various components and every community has a different structure on how they have, whether they have an overarching development code and then within it is zoning subdivision regulations, et cetera. Some have zoning, so I want to just kind of have that big picture. We have a zoning map, so we're talking kind of zoning regulations that go within that, which also include your development regulations.
But to your point, I think, Commissioner Hanson, it, I mean, from a, having that, like, a good comprehensive plan, it takes out the, I mean, from you as a decision-making, it kind of, and we've had this discussion before about how much subjectivity you have and how much cover, you know, you, because, you know, if you can reference, you know, we like this because it's approved, or we don't agree with it because it's not, I mean, then it's not, it's not like, it's just, I don't like it because it's my opinion, or it's ugly or whatever. So that, but that, that's, and I think, you know, having, having its basis in state statute gives it a lot more heft.
Exactly, yep. And we'll touch on that as well a little bit later in the commissioner's roles. We talked about kind of that, that cover and kind of where, where you're making your decisions from as well. Mike, did you want to talk at all about some of the requirements before we transition?
Yeah, did you, yeah, I just brought, wanted to bring up like just the amendment process, because we went through that with the building height about, you know, because you are the body that operates within the, you know, the zone, has to address the zoning code, you know, you have the authority to initiate code amendments. I mean, there's, there's a process that I can't quote, it's just the public. The public can initiate it on some certain criteria, but also you as a board can, you know, if you're not happy with something, obviously, like, went through the building height, we're talking about some medium density kind of changes and things like that, you, you can initiate those changes for that code or have that go right down.
And that comes to that as with the staff rule, because it's hard for staff sometimes to be in that position saying, hey, here's a code issue, let's work on this, maybe to have that support of the planning commission or another board to help guide that.
It's been pretty good at it since I've been here.
Yep. Yep, and so.
There's no shortage of amendments, right?
Alright, so jumping into kind of staff's roles within all of this. You know, kind of high level, again, you know, staff, they're your facilitator, they're kind of navigating you through the process.
Can I ask a question, but though if we recommend any changes, it still has to go to the town to be approved.
Correct. So it's go through the process.
We're not ultimate.
You help initiate the process and in a lot of communities, if the zoning commission is recommending approval of something because of what you're seeing at your level with development plans, subdivisions, things like that, it carries weight with most board, trustees, or councils. That's where, and that relationship and kind of working closely together is also important. And having them informed and knowing what's going on through the process is also important. So again, staff, you know, their, their first and foremost role is that facilitator. They're going to confirm that all the similar requirements are complete per the code, so they're going through and kind of checking off all those base requirements. They're going to come at every project usually from a solution-oriented approach, kind of being a leader, really helping figure out how do we resolve issues, if there are issues between what the developer applicant is wanting versus what the community wants. They try to come to some balance or some common ground and make sure that they identify those things that are being presented to you all. So I, I consider staff to be the subject matter experts, they're the technical experts. So project review, that's kind of the breadwinner of your planning department. You know, they're the ones that are looking over all the projects. Again, looking at against code criteria, the comprehensive planning criteria. And they're also analyzing all required reports, so traffic studies, large studies, drainage studies, just keep going on, environmental studies. So that's, that's their, that's what they're doing here. They're kind of that stopgate, if you will, before it gets to you as part of your analysis.
And I, I, without kind of getting editorialized, it, I think it's a really important kind of, from a, to understand, I mean, from a, the soft skills required, because I think when you're, you know, part of the challenge is, you know, when you're dealing with people, a range of expertise, you know, people that are, you know, individual homeowners that are doing work up to sophisticated developers. And, you know, they have different understandings or knowledge of the code and how it's applied. And having staff that can kind of help get people to a yes or get people to understand and not simply just check boxes, because I've worked with, I mean, I, I would say it's not my department here. I think you, but in other communities where, you know, it's, it's kind of, no, this is incorrect. Here, submit it to me and I'll tell you if it's correct. And, you know, it's not correct, you know, and, and it's not, I, I think, you know, technically it's, you know, kind of the, you know, part of the, of the role of a good planning department is to help people understand the code and what the limitations are and, and talk them through, you know, some of the, the processes and the things that need to be improved or the deficiencies. So that by the time it gets to you, you're not refereeing kind of arguments, I guess. You can, you can kind of take the public's, you know, the public view and, and look at the staff's requirements and make sure to confirm, you know, because I, I, I think, you know, when you, you know, when you, especially in communities where you have development pressures, making sure that, you know, staff is, you know, able to communicate what those goals are and what the processes are, I, I think is really important. So I, I don't want to, I want to get too far into that, but I think it's important because if you have, it can, I would say if you have staff, it can, because I don't think you do, you can get really unfun, really.
I would say that a slightly different way. I find it extremely valuable to have the staff as a buffer between us and homeowners and developers. Because that way we don't have to get into the process. We can, we can be the end kind of adjudicator or something like that. And, and having that buffer is extremely important, because otherwise it would be impossible to do what we do.
Yeah, and I would say that, especially because you are, you know, voluntary citizens that are in this role, it gives you a certain degree of kind of independence and autonomy, because you're not tied politically to the system. But it, you do need some of that, I think. And, you know, the other thing that, that we try to do, and I think what Mike was getting at, is ultimately, we want this experience to be as painless as possible for everyone. That means the applicant, you know, staff itself, if, you know, obviously we'd like it to be easier. No thanks for developing code. We want it to be easier for you and ultimately we want to get to a solution that's in line with the community. And so it requires a lot of negotiation, I think, and a desire to get to a solution without causing a lot of heartache. And I know that that's not always the way it works at all, but that's the goal, so.
And really, that's what makes staff be the subject matter experts. I've worked in places where they wanted the planners to be more box trackers and just make sure it meets the criteria, check the box, move it along. Rather than really diving in and being a navigator, really helping resolve all those issues before it goes forward. You can easily say it in less of a long, because that's not quite how I, how I work as a planner. It's a lot of, I enjoy getting in there and working with the applicants, with the developers. Your staff here enjoy that as well, and that's why we're trained to do what we do.
And I will say just for, for Josh, we work, we both work in the public sector, Jessica and Jeff's school, but we've also now worked for developers. And so we have a, it, it kind of helps balance the perspective a little bit to, you know, understanding, going, helping, you know, go, going into communities and understanding, you know, what, what, what you need from a planning department to be successful on both from a development process and from a community perspective.
Any questions on staff roles before we kind of transition? Alright, jumping into the commission's roles. So again, kind of some high level points, and really this has to do more with the development process, because, you know, as you all come on board, you kind of get the Robert Tools of Order, you have the high level procedural, you know, explanation of how accurate you need to use decorum, things like that. So didn't want to dive into that too much. That's generally done by your local director and or the attorney's office, they always love those kinds of recommendations.
And we don't really follow Robert Tools of Order. So our, 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 I guess our, what's the protocols are a little bit more organic. But I think this is potentially another topic that we can bring up. And having Dan Kramer here to do a little overview on some of the procedural stuff to give you some comfort and clarity about when certain things are said, what they actually mean or things that you could, phrases you can use too, if you want to, if you're equipped to have any more. So we can talk about that.
Yeah, that, that is what I appreciate. I think I mentioned to you that when I was chairing, we had an actual public hearing. Like being definitive on will be open hearing, how to close it, doing that, I think would be useful.
Yeah. They'll, they'll really help you out, but it just helps, I mean, in most circumstances, you run into issues, but it's always that one, that one time, or that one time you recommend denial to something that's contested that you kind of wish you had all that in the background. Look, as if they see any kind of issue with the process or the new process, you know, and they can just throw it out there.
Yeah, as I say, that's really, they'll, having the, they'll get you on the process, not in substance.
And consistency.
Yeah.
Using the same process for everything that comes before us would be really good.
Because it's an easy, easy thing to fly, it's easy to find in minutes, recordings and everything. Alright, so commissioners' roles. So we're going to even analyze, you know, this is where, when the packets come out, you know, you're looking through the materials. From your understanding, trying to, trying to glean as much information and understanding where staff's going in their report, their recommendations that they've built out, or with their language. You know, they highlighting variances or deviations, items that, you know, in the way, so that way you understand the line. You know, why are those in there? You know, in doing this, it really is helpful if you can identify gaps. If there's any gaps in information you have there, you know, make note, jot those things down. So that way it'll help you, one, when you get to the public meeting, but also if you need some clarity beforehand and there's something missing, you know, reach out to your staff and ask some of those clarifying questions. If they can help revise or be prepared to come to the meeting and ask. So if there's technical questions regarding a report or study that engineering looks at, and you're going to ask that during the meeting, the engineer may or may not be there. So it really helps staff prepare, helps you correct your note, kind of what do I need to have available for resources at the meeting to answer those kind of questions. Again, that also should include the comp plan vision and value, really looking at those policies, the recommendations in the comp plan and understanding, does this use fit, does this request fit within this vision where we're looking to go with the comp plan? And since you're going through the comp plan amendment, it's a great time to start pointing at some of that information. You know, if you know that certain vision values are being formulated and that you have a certain direction you're working towards, you can still start to look at those things. Obviously, it doesn't have the same weight as the adopted comp plan, but it's still stuff to consider as you're making your review and working through your analysis. And that's something that staff is doing kind of behind the scenes throughout the whole review process. So they're, they're definitely helping out, filtering a lot of that content for you as well. You know, the other one is kind of what Mike was linking to a little bit earlier. Really making sure that those decisions are based on criteria and not kind of the personal likes or dislikes of the project. It is a really hard thing to balance, especially if you are a business or property owner and you buy a development project, it could impact you positively or negatively, not having that, that emotion as you're sitting there in, at the dais and kind of making your decisions. So it's really important to kind of make sure you're wearing the right hat when you're in that public hearing through that public process. But it is tough. I've, I've seen a lot of commissioners over the years that are just like, I just don't like this. It's like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't ever say, my gut tells me how I have to vote. I, that's it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really important, I mean, to have kind of your own, again, that's, kind of goes to the review analysis and having that, I mean, preparation, be ready to say why you like this project, or why you're supportive of this project, I should say. You know, it, it fits the criteria, yep, like your staff's analysis here. Or the biggest one for me is if there's a no, if you're getting a vote no, explain why. I've been through so many meetings where a commissioner or a board member, trustee would sit back, quiet the whole time, opportunity to ask questions, nope, comes to the vote, everyone's getting their no. And then they just move on, it's, the caveat is just what happened or what was missing there. You know, what was the reason for the no, especially if others are getting a vote no and you get to a no voter, you know, the shot down, what's the line is that? The no is hooked up during the public hearing, so.
I had an incident when I was in the city of Lublin, or it was a downtown project with a, for some emotional reason, I won't get into the details, but the planning commission voted it down and then afterward, after the fact, asked the plan, the planning director to come up with the criteria, the, the, then.
Justify.
Yes.
Oh, that's a good idea.
If you have a minute, please, that sounds smart.
And I've had, I've had meetings just like that as well. And basically the attorney would say, we're not leaving until we have very specific recommendations based on the findings. And so you need to tell us what it is that you want. And it was a little bit of back and forth, like, well, what do you think it is? You're like, no, 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 no. But at times what they'll do is have staff come back at the next meeting and prepare. If you're going to have a denial, the findings that, that the commissioners or the trustees can use for that denial. So that's, you know, I, I would say, if you're ever on the fence about a particular decision, think about it from both angles and really try to, and you can always ask us, what, you know, could I use this criteria? Do I just need to look at it, you know, from an opposing viewpoint? And I think that could also be helpful too, because our plannings are not great in our public.
Well, and if, then if it comes as a basis for litigation.
Exactly, without getting.
And I would say, always remember to, if it's highly contentious, you have the option to take it to the next meeting. And to say, we need to think about this, or we need to understand, we have these questions that we like, and can we table it? Because. Additional information and have some additional discussion. If you feel like you need to build your findings, or, you know, if you're not comfortable. Because, you know, again, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not kind of advocating for just kind of doing everything that's legally defensible positions, but sometimes, especially if it's contentious, you want to make sure that you're, you know, good.
We, we did that with the building height, so we continued a lot.
Yeah.
To, to keep it going. You guys may not know this, but in the two years I've been on the commission, we have only had unanimous votes.
Have we?
Yeah.
Really?
Right, I, I, I was really close last month when the break was rock, because it doesn't sit with me a lot with me, but I couldn't find any reason to really vote no, because it was, you know, it was a good plan with respect to the code.
This community has been in trouble in the past, not with this one, I think we've done a pretty good job, but with previous planning commissions, not citing plaintiffs and turning projects down and then overturning appeal. But that is, when I've been to the other side of this, that's been a significant problem a number of years back.
Well, in the instance that I brought up, what happened was they, it was frustration. It was clear that they didn't have a basis to deny. And then it would, the appeal would have gone to the city council. And the city council was a predicament, because they didn't want to overturn the will of the volunteer sort of board. They didn't like to do that, but we're. They didn't like to do that, but were kind of under pressure because it wasn't, they weren't on good legal standing. So they had to kind of swallow their part of the planning mission and then bring it back and say, oh, well, we rethought it and so we're going to prove it after. So it was, it was a lot of unnecessary, I mean, there was some things, but it's stuff like that. I think you just, you know, want to make sure that you try to avoid, because that just doesn't paint, it doesn't paint the process in a good light, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what's interesting, you know, Howard brought up really high. You know, that took longer than it needed to. I don't think anybody's going to question, you know, argue with me on that. But, you know, it's, you know, every month there seem to be new questions, new observations, new points of view, new information coming at us. And I don't know how to shut, you know, kind of, all right, we're going off into the deep end that we don't need to go because it's not really, you know, the conversation isn't really germane to what we're trying to talk to. Or, you know, this isn't really relevant or, you know, I mean, it's, how do you truncate? How do you, you know, support asking clarifying questions and support the dialogue and the fact finding and all that other stuff? But also be respectful of the process and the time that we're taking up. And that, I struggle with that.
It's a harder balance, but I think in the case of the building heights, in the end, the decision, if we recommended it and the trustees voted for it, and the fact that it took so much time and went round and round probably made that decision easier for them.
And I think there's a distinction between policy and the quajet judicial reviews that I, that we took too long in the process, but I am much more comfortable taking more time than a policy decision than a judicial decision where the applicant needs an answer. Yeah.
And I would say that part of that, of navigating through that process, we can do that in a partnership. So between the chair and between the director, even potentially the town attorney, that there could be some discussion about, you know, we seem to be getting a little hard field from the content, let's try to bring this back. Or at this point, we're going to highlight the key issues that we identified and we're going to go through those. Do we have consensus on that? If we do, let's agree that this is where this list starts and ends. And then let's try to wrap this up. And I think that's, it's a tough job because you don't want to leave something out there that may be ambiguous. But I think it just really depends on what the issue is. And those are always times where if we know in advance that it's going to be controversial or if we know if it is a policy decision that could be taking some time, that we need to write it in, let's talk about those times. I'd like to help you with that here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really helpful because that is good to kind of focus the conversation. But what's great is we've been through that now with the process. And so staff understands where you all come from, from your thought process and different things, some things that you're thinking of and you're considering as part of your analysis. So that way they know now, you know, what kind of content, what kind of materials or maybe, a list was a good one, we need that more materials as part of the presentation we have. And so while it's never fun to, you know, have meetings and have things kind of get kicked a little bit more, but then also, you know, people trail into here and there, it's actually good early on in the process to understand, especially if you move forward into further code updates and code changes, it really helps get the staff, you know, our side is working on things as well.
One thing that seems to be real challenging, and I don't know if you've heard from this, is when applicants or people in public hearings start asking questions with the expectation to initiate a debate. And, well, the first time that happened, I didn't, you know, I was just listening. Somebody pointed out that it's not the applicant's role or the public's role to ask questions. But of course they do anyway. But because it's not their role, I guess that gives us immunity from having to answer them in some sense. And we got on that, let ourselves get sucked into it.
And you can always, you know, if you, if a member of the public raised some good valid points, you can always redirect those back to staff. We may or may not be able to answer them, we may have to say, we'll get back to you. But yeah, I think the intention there is because it is a time for public comment, they can say anything. And I need anything, as we have all experienced, and even worse, that there are definitely times when, as, you know, as commissioners, you could say, we're satisfied, we don't need, I don't feel the need to have those questions, you know, broached by staff. And that's really up to the commissioners. If you hear a question, you're like, I'd actually like to get an answer on that, then after the public comment, or you, I think after their comment is finished, you let the chair know or you could let the chair know after public comment is completely finished. If nobody is waiting to speak, then you can redirect that.
That was just the last meeting, we had questions from the public on Raven Rock. How I handled that, were you comfortable with that as staff? Did I let those questions come in? We answered, well, I asked staff to answer them all in that case. I felt they were relevant to the project, that was part of it. If they hadn't been relevant, I would have said, no, we don't need to go there.
Yeah, no, I think it was fine and I, but I do think that there are times when you make mind members in public that do want to draw it out and they want to sow seeds in doubt.
They want to start a debate.
Yeah, and I think that's really, again, unfortunately, it's going to be your call about whether or not you really want to go down that path. And you can, you can always, to some extent, answer some of those questions or ask staff, can you please just clarify this? Or you may say, no, we're good.
Well, in my experience, you jump in or the planner jumps in, you know, if, you know, we're having this open forum and there's a question out there.
If it's, if it's during the public comment period, technically, we should not be jumping in. Nobody should be jumping in. It's really your decision to allow them to use the amount of time that they have. And then thank you very much, we're on to the next comment. And what you can do, you could be taking notes during that time as commissioners and saying, this question was relevant, I'd like that to be clarified in. So once the whole comment period is wrapped up, you could then, they could direct their comments to the chair and say, I'd like somebody to answer Mrs. Such and Such's question. But the problem, like what, when that starts happening, this back and forth when you're in the public comment period, is that the line is completely blurred. You don't, there's no decorum. Those people, you know, and it's harder, I think, when we have these Zoom meetings. It's harder for us to step in and say, stop. But when you're in person, I think people tend to be a little bit more reserved sometimes. So we may not see, I mean, they'll still come up and challenge things, but I think it'll be easier for them to kind of understand there's a, there's a process and there's decorum here that we expect.
I was going to jump in. Same thing that you said, so I think that was like spot on because then what happens is if you answer all the questions, you know, at the end of the public comment, you'll hear from the back of the room, someone tried to throw out, shout out another question. As the chair or whoever is responsible for the meeting, you kind of have to shut it down. That's just that kind of situation.
We really think it was send a follow up email or something for people to comment. And that is the hardest, I think it's probably the hardest, I think the hardest element to address in the process.
And it really also depends on how many people are in the public that want to comment. And I've had cases in the past where the council chambers were full, the lobby was full, and people are waiting in line to say their comments. And so you really have to be mindful about get people in, make sure that they're heard, and then keep that, keep that line moving because otherwise you will sit there for hours.
Do you guys have that timeframe in general?
I believe we do. And it's also, I think it's the discussion, the chairs are saying, I'm only going to do a lot for one minute, probably. And that could be because we have 3,000 people in the room, which is kind of frightening. But you can do that too.
And another reason for all this is that there are people who submit written comments and those become part of the record, just like they recorded verbal comments. But the written comments are not, it's not possible to start a debate with others. And so you're being unfair to the people with written comments if you get into back and forth with the verbal comments.
That's true. And you could always say, you know, we received this written comment from such and such and I would like staff to clarify this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, in fact, we can do that before the meeting many times.
You can, yeah, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, I'd always encourage to ask for clarification rather than kind of the assumption that whatever was written on paper, whatever someone jumps up and says is bad, especially if it's what staff said or what your best judgment is. I've seen that happen as well.
So it's your policy, you know, that if an email comes in on a specific project, do you all respond to all those emails?
Often we don't. Typically what we'll do, because it's, again, it's public comment, those just go in the file and we reference them and send them to you so that you can access them.
Right.
It depends. You know, if somebody, if somebody says, look, I just, I really have a topical question and I just don't understand, can somebody please help me with this? Of course, we would, we would try to clarify that for them. But when you get the typical, like, I don't like this project because it's in my backyard. Okay, well, there's really nothing to respond to. But if, or if they say, how would you like it if this was in your backyard? I wouldn't respond to that either.
Sometimes staff or if it goes to like commission numbers directly, make sure you're always sharing that to staff so that they can read it in the record, don't get into a conversation, obviously, being a no. Or, you know, if someone catches you on the street, hey, you're talking about this on when they done a, come to the meeting or whatever the naivety is.
We're almost each other too. And I would, I would advise, I mean, I, I think I can do it, but there was an incident where someone poured out text messages during, like, and there was a lot of material. Now, nothing that was said was, but it's just the perception that gets it, so.
I've seen board members doing those.
Yep.
And you see the other one doing this, you're like, and they're talking, like, letting each other stop, like, it looks like, you know, something.
But I just, I want to go back to that email question. If you have responded, someone sends something on a project, you respond to it. Is that response also showing up in our package because, our packet? Because right now what I see is just the emails from the populace.
Yeah, I believe if there had been a response, we should include that because you should see the entire dialogue. But often we're not.
Okay.
I think often we don't respond to those.
One more question on this slide. Site visit is a subject I've got.
No, please, jump in and then we can.
Well, I, there's this thing, what's it called?
Exportation.
Communication.
Yeah.
So how's that fit in with site visits?
So a site visit to me is you have a new commercial retailer, want to come in, they can site. Before you have the meeting, to me, I always love to encourage commission board members, like, see the sites, see the context, understand why landscaping doesn't make sense right here, or why a berm or, you know, screen walls are here, well, because the site is 15 feet below the road, so a berm's not really going to do anything in those situations. Or other unique circumstances that may show some deviation requests or adherence requests or anything else that would be typical code requirements that may just perhaps be unique because of the constraints of the site or the unique situations with the site. So you can go look at site. There's nothing wrong with going, looking at a site, assessing the site, you know, taking notes while you're out there. So that, that's part of your review and analysis.
But you shouldn't do it as a group. There's your ex parte.
Yes.
If you're doing it in discussion with somebody else.
Yes.
But to go look at it individually is different.
Exactly.
And I don't think, like, I was wondering, I was just curious if you were referring to that, if you go out there with the applicant? Is it like if you say?
Well, no, I mean, you're obviously not supposed to go to the applicant. And I presume, Jeff, you go out and look at sites when you do a review. Could we ask to go with you?
I think you can, as long as, I think the important thing is that you don't go with even the stated intention of making a decision and verbalizing that decision before the public process. So I think as long as you go as, I am looking to evaluate the site.
Gather.
I may have, yeah, gathered information, I have some clarification questions for staff. You could probably do that if, I don't know how often that would happen. You could even go to the site, let's say it's a restaurant, they want to change their use or something, and you walk in and the owner's there. It's not like you can, like you're going to run out screaming, but you would just, you would just say, thank you, I'm just here to just take a look around, thank you very much. And it'd be like, well, are you going to support my project? Say, please come to the meeting. Yeah, say, I can't.
I would say though, to that point, I would be cautious about going out with staff only because then that puts you in an advantaged position with the other commissioners. And often it probably isn't that big of a deal, but it becomes a perception of, well, you know, Jeff, you talked to him about it, but you didn't tell me about what you were thinking. And, and so I think, I, you know, I've experienced it before and I think where, you know, it's the, you get that argument about the haves and have nots and who do you favor? You know, if you're going out, and how did they know that they could go out and the other one didn't? And then, and then, you know, and how can I trust that you didn't try to influence? You know, and so I think to the extent, I mean, unless it's some really technical requirements that bear some additional explanation, I wouldn't, I would discourage going out with staff unless, unless there was some reason why I think the board needed to go out and it could be organized so everyone could have equal access.
Yeah, then it's a meeting.
Well, what we could do as well, as a, as another possibility, is that Jeff could then send an email out to the rest of the planning commissioners and say, I went out with Commissioner Hanson, we went to the site, we looked at this, this and this. Commissioner had three questions, these were the answers. That way everybody has the same access to the information and if they then want to go out on site, they can.
I won't do this, Jeff, you don't mean.
I mean, this is not typical, usually the planning commissioners are, everybody's so busy. They're doing it on the weekends, they're going to run and do it after work. And so they typically, we have no idea. I mean, we don't, we don't keep track of you.
So I agree with everything we're saying, but in the initial training when I was brought on this, town attorney told me the opposite. And that's a real, when I saw this in your email, this is one of the points that.
To not take a site visit?
Do not take a site visit. It was explicit from the town attorney and I questioned that.
We will clarify that because that is not my experience in any of the jobs I've had.
He's absolutely right, that's why I raised the interest.
No, I think that's a great.
I suspect that he probably, I think he probably made the assumption that you were doing a site visit with me out.
I.
And that, and of course.
It was, it was, I, we asked about this or I asked Mr. Rettig. Yeah. I remember, I remember asking, well, this is a small town, I mean, I'm going to.
I'm going to drive by that spot.
I know, I drive by it every day, what are you talking about?
So what could.
No, you have to have your mind, he said.
So what could game I had is don't go on the private property yourself. Because, you know, from a public roadway, you can assess any site, public site.
I love clarification on this because I asked about six questions on this and was shocked.
I'll take it back to Dan and we will get, we'll have some more conversation. Because that is kind of.
That'd be the first time I've had this conversation, so.
Yeah, if you live in.
Actually, when we were doing the height restriction, I walked the town and I sort of look at, because I thought there were things that were already above that. And I felt like, ooh.
Well, see, that's policy. So policy is different. You can gather other information than that, but if we're talking to cause like judicial or if we're looking at application, that would, that was the distinction as I understand.
No, this came up for me in the context of the Brook Drive Water Department Development down there on Trish Creek. And it's like, what do you mean, I'm not supposed to know about the site? How can I, how can, how can you unsee something?
Well, you can only capture so much of the photos, like, there's been instances where staff will do site photos, but like, you can only see so much from the front. And you're not going to get the information you need to make an informed decision.
I've had commissioners that every single project they did, I know.
And I know the commission, even used to discuss it in this town. When I visited the site, this is what I observed, they would talk about it in the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that clarified. Sorry about the transition.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't mean to.
No, no question there.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to get clarification on that, so I'm glad it was here.
And I, I'd be curious to find out what they think, so. Any other questions on this slide?
Well, okay, so I bypassed this a little bit on the staff, a little bit for this.
Yeah, follow me a little back.
Well, it applies. So it's code interpretation and the commission's ability to read code and say, this is what that means versus staff making determination and saying, this is what that means and directing the planning commission how to apply it. Where's the line there?
That's a good question.
That I trust the staff, we've got a great relationship. I know in projects, actually not with you, Jessica, but in projects before, I had different code interpretations than what the staff was bringing to the meeting. And it was really uncomfortable.
I think part of it is having those conversations. I mean, you can't fix it in that moment. And it could be one of those situations where you're like, hey, we need to have additional, additional analysis here. Maybe the town attorney asked to weigh in on how it's actually interpreted. Usually the director's doing that ahead of time.
Usually the director's doing that ahead of time. Or going off of like, this is what the truth is from these conversations and how it's been applied over time. And this is a language, cause code can be, especially older code, can be very unpredictable. It can be, like, this word, flip it this way, maybe something totally different, so. So it is something to work with, kind of your director and the chair, kind of work back and forth on that. But also, if it comes up during a subdivision process, you're like, but I interpret it this way, or I thought it was this way. And you can't do that, maybe one of those, you continue and have the director, you know, work with the attorney and clarify that interpretation.
The closest was the, the, yeah, the Golden Leaf, there were some before that that, I had even stronger opinions on it that were different. That one, we did continue, worked it out.
Okay.
And I think it's, if, again, going, just kind of going back to this, when you're going through and reviewing your, the, the application itself and all the material. If you have questions, and this is, this is so helpful for us, let us know in advance. Just send me an email, don't send it to the planner, send it to me. Let me know what your question is and we will try to get you an answer, a clarifying answer before the hearing. And we will also let the other commissioners know that that question is out there because they may have the same issue. So, if, the idea here is about preparation, because if, if, if it becomes a situation, and I've, I've said this before about stumping the planner in the meeting. It's awkward for them, it's awkward for you, and it's awkward for the public because they start to, you know, we don't wanna, we don't want them to think that we don't know the code. Or that we're unprepared, it's just sometimes these nuances, especially with our code. They, they are, that code is rife with it, so if you can, even if it's just the day before, send us a quick email. We'll get it and clarify it and maybe a phone call with you, maybe a meeting, whatever we need to do, we'll get it.
What way is? So, you know, there was one, it was a large vacation home room. Right, and it did not meet the code, but the staff was recommending it. And the justification for recommending it was, well, the previous planning commissions had made exceptions on this. And, you know, I'm, how, you know, back to your point about, you gotta have justification. If the code says one thing and the vote, and the recommendation from the staff says another thing, and ultimately the vote comes out however it does. I don't, I don't understand how you can walk that back and say, cause it's not in code.
I think that's a, that's excellent, that's a great example because I think it puts you in a difficult position and also puts staff in a difficult position of following a past precedent.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that if it doesn't make sense. And even if that is a unpopular decision, I think what we have to do is unfortunately, we've gotta use our code. And if our code says no, then we can't support this. And we had, actually, we had a recent Board of Adjustment case where they were really, they had a really good argument. And it was, it made all kinds of sense. And they had done things in the past that, that were expanding the number of rooms in this hotel. But if you look at our code and if you looked at the criteria, they are not meeting it. And so we said, we're sorry. Well, the previous director said I could do this, and I said, I, I, I'm sorry for him that he's not here to defend himself. But I think what he would have told you is that you can always apply for variance or an appeal or, you know, what it is that you want. But we are not obligated to support that request. And you are not obligated to support our recommendation. So if you don't feel comfortable with that and if you don't let, if, again, if it doesn't pass that sniff test, it doesn't seem right. Then the staff recommendation is only that.
I think what's important about that too, if you've seen a couple of these happen, where it's, there's this development project, here's the same variance or the same waiver deviation we're seeing over and over. Or, or hearing this is causing an issue, goes back to our previous discussion about code. And directing staff going like, hey, staff, can we work on this? Can we get this cleaned up so that way we're not causing more of a headache for an applicant or uncertainty? That something that should just be part of their project has to be well-weed till the very end and we'll see, you know, how it, how it goes out.
And, you know, that, I'll tell you, that's a dynamic that I see play out in a lot in Colorado because you have a lot of small towns that are becoming bigger towns. And when it was a small town, it's like, hey, Bob did it that way for me, and he, he just looked the other way and back in eighty-seven and, and, and you're not, no, cause he did. And, you know, and, and, you know, we put a lot lying through the middle of a building, even though without a two, you know, without, but he'd let me do it. Cause, hey, we get beers at the Rotary or whatever. And, and then, and then I think then, you know, and then I think as you grow and the, part of the growth pain is then unraveling a lot of those precedents and.
Sorry.
And, and so I, I, I think, so I, I think it's a really, I mean, it, it's a fair question to bring up.
But I think to Jessica's point, it does, it puts staff in a, in a awkward position because it's like, you can't, it's not the Supreme Court, I mean, precedent. Just because somebody did it some way for a long time, you still have to find a basis in the code and the law, so it, but, but again, I think. It's a dynamic that is, occurs more frequently than you would.
And it's, you know, my concern about that is, is obviously litigation. If we're doing something that is reliant upon bad information or we don't have the code to support it, I'm not going in that direction. And I, we've had situations come up, even, you know, in the time I've been here where it's like, well, it was interpreted this way in the past, I'm like, well, that's not how I see it. So let's talk to the attorney, let's get some clarity there. And then if we still can't get it, it becomes my decision to say we have to go with the code. That's not, that is not popular, I believe. But I'm, what I'm concerned about is that somebody, either somebody is gonna benefit from that or judgment down the road and try to take advantage of it. Or we're gonna get sued for, for bad logic, basically, and it happens.
And that's where a lot comes to, a lot of the older ones have some subjectivity in there. And it's really tricky on the staff because you create these interpretations. And it's because there just wasn't the motivation or the ability to make the code changes back, you know, fifteen years ago, or the years ago, whatever it was. It's just always carried forward with this interpretation and separate documents somewhere, what the code is trying to say. And so it does make it very difficult. And even new codes still have some of those issues. It's, no matter what you do, you can never have a perfect code. So, the one, the person that has a perfect code, I will buy their drinks for the rest of my life.
Yeah, and every town around it will have the same code because we'll all see.
Yeah, everyone steals ideas. The idea is to keep it, you know, hit the criteria you want to hit. If, if you kind of want to have areas kind of work, that's where those other planning documents are, those coordinate plans, those design guidelines. That's what really gives you the ability to have the creativity and uniqueness based on context and situations versus just the strict nature of the code. Setbacks to this, height this, so. It's where, you know, in the future, as you kind of continue to do code efforts, work on your codes, have balancing those two, both regulation and also for the guidelines. All right, so, this was an interesting one because there's actually two places where this list is. And so I think I hit the right one. Let me, let me, I'm wrong, I'm.
I think you got it.
All right, so, what's great here is, it's very clear what the planning commission reviews. And I do love the table nature of this. It makes it very easy to understand who's responsible for what and at what level. Obviously, the R is the review body, that's where the planning commission, you know, reviews something and provides a recommendation to the board. And then the decision-making, those are the ones that are, I wouldn't say even more important, but you're kind of the, the last met, last, you know, step in the process unless they do. You know, appeal it to the board or anything else. But code amendments, you know, that's what you've all been working on and have worked on as well. So you're very familiar with that and then go back, comprehensive, that's your guys' documents, so.
Again, the town attorney and I spar over that one, but yes, I like this one.
Which one?
Comprehensive plan. Every time I mention that, that this board will adopt it. I might get shot down, but.
Communities struggle with that.
I've heard them say that.
Yeah, there's a lot of communities that struggle.
They actually smack you down for it, really.
That's in state statute, I think.
Yeah, that is the planning commissioners'. So there are some communities that they make the town council or state council adopt it. That's their internal process that they establish, but how you have it set up is your decision-making body. So, so again, yeah, comprehensive plan, that's your document, so. And then obviously the other processes here, I think you go through, and I think you all generally know your processes. I think we're gonna go over a couple of flat examples, just as kind of a high-level review of what you're looking at and then the same with the development review. And I can see the example, you sent over that Dollar, Dollar General, I believe it was. I can understand where it can be a little confusing when I open that, that plan set, there was a lot in there. And there's, your code requires a lot, it didn't involve a lot of details that, maybe a more construction or building permit document, less site and necessary documents. Of course, that's your internal direction on what you want within those plans, but I can definitely understand where there might be some confusion on what are you looking at when you see those plans, so. Move forward here. But again, bringing in applications is what we're gonna see. I hope I covered that a little bit last week. So what should we consider?
I'll be right back.
You know, the high-level components with the comprehensive plan, you know, kind of start that big picture. I always like to, and staff often times do this, kind of the high-level, work your way down into the weeds. So, again, start the count plan, meet those goals of the, the count plan as well as the adopted plan, making sure it's checking those high-level boxes. And then kind of working down into the code, the code criteria and really understanding where staff's analysis comes in. Like I said earlier, they're your subject matter experts, so relying on their technical abilities and their ability to analyze the plans. But it's not to say we're not humans, we don't make mistakes, or there's a typo in the plan, there's supposed to be a five-foot setback, it says fifty-foot memo by accident, you know. Those are the things that you can easily catch and ask those clarifying questions with staff before the meeting. And again, the heat site considerations, and that's where, I was gonna say again, the site visit is real good, but if I told otherwise, I won't linger on that too much, so. And then the last part is just understanding, you know, what, what is in that plan, what is the criteria the code has that has to be within that plan? And that's so that staff is checking, they're making sure that what you see is a cleanest package they can possibly get from an applicant. Sometimes there's little details that can be worked out, I'll highlight, you know, any errors or issues that they're having an issue coming to some resolution with the app we're handling or developer on. And it requires this, this body to jump in and kind of establish what that is. But it's more rare, it's in more rare circumstances, so. And then understand how all those fit together, all those different plans and guidelines. You know, then looking at the site plan with the landscape plan, the utility drawings, and understanding how it all comes together. There's a reason that tree can't be there, or there's a water. Logically, that's not gonna work. So first, be the same, when I print off a few of these ones, there's a couple I printed off, I don't know what. So this is a green land subdivision, but it also says rudimentary class, so we have to look into this. Cause I'm not, you're code expert by any means, so I was trying to understand. But yeah, when I, when I looked at this flat, I could definitely understand why it was hard to understand, and there's a lot going on there. So, the struggle is, right, you have the nice legend on the side and, you know, I love our designer friends here. But, you know, the legend's great, but when you're looking at print through your on a screen, some of the lines definitely come together, especially dashed lines. So, a lot of times you'll see different line work, you know, grade back, faded back, usually that's like your topography lines, sometimes your easement lines. Callouts are really important though, so when I'm looking at a platform, the staff likely did this too. You start to look around at, where are all my dimensions? What are all my callouts and what callouts are missing? Because if there's an easement here and it's missing a callout, you wouldn't have a clue or if there's not a ledge reference and what that is.
So what does it mean, what do you mean when you say callout?
Yes, so the callouts are, look at the kind of right side of the image, that's where I, so I'll point up here. And then you can look at the line. So right in here, there's a callout, says twenty-five foot building setback. So those are great callouts, usually they're dimensional lines, sometimes they'll have leader arrows, different things like that. Usually you'll see the easements, setbacks, building setbacks, other dimensional requirements like this. And those are important because that's, you know, what staff's looking at when they're checking, meets the base, the minimum criteria of code, making sure it's checking all those boxes. You also see the easement callouts and you'll see different abbreviations sometimes with that. Whether it's a utility easement, that could be, you know, a U, I mean, you'll see different ones for different engineering ones, but generally, you'll see a utility easement, sometimes access easements. If it's shared driveways, other places like that, detention easements, you'll see some of those different callouts on plans, again, depending on the magnitude and the size. Yeah, this one does include your topography lines, existing buildings. Trying to see all of it here, even some utility lines. So a lot of times with the plat, when drawn like this, sometimes you'll see them separated on different sheets, so that way it helps with the legibility. I think it just comes down to how the code is set up and what it requires on one plan set, which can make it challenging to read and interpret, so. But staff's always trying to work with applicants on that, trying to balance the line work and line weights to understand all those different things. So, looking at this one, you also tend to have within the lot area, or within the lot boundaries, excuse me, you'll have the lot area. They'll usually have what the lot reference is based on this subdivision, number of acres, sometimes square footage calculations in there as well, depending on the size. When you get larger plats with fifty lots, you all don't have too many, you know, two-hundred, four-hundred lot subdivisions. But a lot of those will have multiple pages and match lines, and you have to look at every little lot, see that has all the required easements, dimensions, the, all the requirements, so. Any questions at this from a high level?
Actually, I have a question from these guys.
They are your experts, so.
The process is, somebody wants to do something like this and they start sending you stuff. Now, there's a whole archive back there of, I don't know, two-by-three sheets of paper and plastic that have these things on them. How do you get them now? Do you get them as a computer file, but then you print out on the appropriate, on a piece of paper and it scales into whatever size you print it out? How does it work?
We get everything electronically, like PDF is, is how we typically review, but we also require a couple of paper copies of the twenty-four by thirty-six.
Okay, big paper copy. So if we, if we saw something that we got weirded out by, we could always come down here and look at the big paper copies.
Sure.
They're obviously more eligible than five-point font here.
We could also print that out, or just have, if you need it.
That gets expensive quick, so. And it's also possible to take the computer file and then blow out portions of it through your screen and scroll around, it gets to you as quickly. So I'm just, the process is, they do send paper copies still.
Okay.
Yep.
There's an easement on here.
Yeah.
Kind of sewer is kind of running almost right through the center of it.
It's got that diagonal right through here. And there's the other one up on the upper left, that one, and then right up there. So those are examples of easements, and so when you're looking at lots, it's what's left for buildable area. And if it doesn't work, it's a buildable lot, and that's, again, a lot of stuff staff will do as part of their analysis, will work through that. They'll identify if there's an issue with that, but usually that's been fleshed out, worked out with the applicant. Cause they're not gonna spend the time and resources moving forward unless they know that they can build something on those lots.
Part of that equation, I just, it's, particularly with underground kind of easements is, where, not only like where do you put that building? But like, if you have a parking lot or if you have a trash, and what happens if they need to service it, then who? What, what are the public requirements to come back and repair it to, you know, if you, and, and if there's a sewer line? So I think part of that is, you know, when you get like input from other departments or public works and, and they come in and say, well, you know, you can put the sewer lot, or your parking lot, over our sewer line. But if we need to maintain it, we're gonna tear it up and we're just gonna put just patch it with recycled ash fault. And if you want it to look nice, that's on, you, you know. And, you know, and so then, obviously then, you know, the developers will come back and say, well, we think you need to move it five feet to the left or something. Because, you know, cause we don't wanna take that, spare that responsibility. So that, that becomes the, just the discussion with the, you know, a lot of times with those easements. And sometimes with overhead electrical, like, there's an overhead electrical easement, those are a little easier to kind of, to move, cause you're, you know. But, but, you know, thinking about how those, those, that end, I think is, is part of the, that's a big public consideration.
And you have a lot of those underground, you can't have a lot of landscaping, or at least certain amount of landscaping within those areas. So you might wonder why, oh, there's, there's a blank spot here, or there's no trees, and yet the spacing's awful. It's because there could be an easement that's going right through there, you can't put a tree in there, so. So with plats, I, I've. So with plats, I've always looked at plats kind of in that higher lens, especially from a planning commissioner, I mean, you're looking to see that the lots. Requirement requirements, confirming, you know, staff's analysis, making sure the easements are where they need to be. But getting into like the naming conventions, double checking, the, the notes, you can skim through those, but those are usually standard notes. That are either incorporated by the community, or a surveyor engineering firm usually has standard notes, that they'll incorporate. Signature blocks, generally that's again, something that staff has a template, or there's easy templates that the developer grabbing at plugs in. So, so really, it's, it's kind of that detail of the, of the drawing itself. And just making sure that everything is there to help you make a decision, if this is a company, a development plan, making sure the two work together. Because there are oftentimes where an easement doesn't line up with the actual access location, or where the utilities are, and that's. Again, stuff that planning and engineering staff usually work out through the process. Any questions on this one?
This is a real.
And this is a tough one, so this is a good example, cause there's just a lot there.
On the standard conventions, one thing that's, from my perspective, this community has not done, that as we work on new code, I would like to see. And that is easement dedications. That this is actually not bad in the language it has on it, but there's others that will just say sewers with dedicated by this plat. Was that public? Is it for this lot, a specific lot? Who's getting it? And I, we have not, we've never standardized that language as community. This one does a pretty good job of calling out, you know, access easement for, or lot one, or whatever it is. Those are one of the things that I sometimes look for, and I have not seen on all drawings that come before us.
Sometimes you'll see just the abbreviation, like PBT for private, PUV for public.
But if it says private, then to who? It doesn't even describe that.
Having a table, kind of an ownership maintenance table, or other kind of dedication tables are sometimes beneficial in plans. I have to go up in plans, because then you can really see this right away, yep, it's being dedicated to the town. This tract A is HOA owned and maintained, or metro district, or whatever else it may be, so. So you can kind of see on the next one, I'll turn the slide, this is the final version of that plat, which to me is a lot cleaner. Lot easier to read from kind of a high level, so here you're not seeing all the different topography lines, utility lines, you're not seeing the building footprints for the existing buildings. Because this is that final plat that gets recorded, and it's documented, because you don't wanna record something that shows a building footprint. That's, that may or may not last, may not be there, it might be removed as part of the demo, so. The other one kind of also serves, I guess, would be kind of like a existing conditions, is that kind of how that preliminary kind of serves, is also that existing conditions, so. Sometimes that's on the preliminary plat, or it's a separate exhibit, that's just used to help inform and, and make a decision. But, yeah, you can see here with the final plat, much cleaner. Trying to see if it calls out anything different with some of those easements. Santerio sewer easement to be decayed with flash. Per comments, surveyor comments, so. So this one has a little bit more description, a little bit more comments to help inform it, may not still get to exactly who is that private owner that's responsible for maintaining. A lot of times with the private utility easements, it's kind of assumed, well, if they do work in that, the easement provider has to put it back to condition. It's kind of like when they tear up a public roadway, there's usually a clause or agreements within code, or within the engineering specs, that they have to put it back to the condition it was before. So in the interim, sometimes they just throw the asphalt and get a bump, and then later they usually come in and kind of clean it up and actually lay the asphalt. It's kind of some examples, so. The final plat though, again, this one you, you all don't see, cause I believe the final plat just goes to the board, so. But you can kind of see where it evolves to, and where it comes to, and so this is the final of the one you saw previously. So unfortunately, the board trustees don't have to look at all that detail when they get to the final plat stage.
Well, maybe we can, for a code update, we can look at these preliminary plat requirements and see if that can be upgradable, that's simple enough.
And it could be as simple as just, there's this second, you know, second page is your utilities and grading, and the first one is more the plat focus, so that way you can really see easements in. Really complex projects, this is what's nice about having some of that flexibility within your requirements, not exactly stating how it has to be shown, but. Having policies in place, so staff can say, there's too much going on here, we need a separate easement page that just calls out the easements being dedicated, or the easements being vacated. Because big projects could have a lot that are taken off, added, having all of that line work over top of each other could really be helpful, so. So that's something pretty often considered as you move forward, and definitely, you know, utilizing staff and their expertise and knowledge will really be helpful there. So the next one, unfortunately, it's only up on the screen, I was struggling when I was printing this, because it was not working, so I'm gonna look at this. Come over here, I could have done this earlier. So this is that Dollar General. So this is what I was talking about when I said the development plan had a lot going on. My first plan set this, it is kind of a construction drawings set, also appears to be your building permit thing, just because it has the electrical.
Oh gosh, yeah.
It has a lot going on.
And the development plan's a middle.
This, yeah, this was the development plan's a middle.
Well, what do you think, required?
So there are a lot of requirements for a development plan in code, and I didn't go through all the criteria, again, I'm not your code expert, but. There's a lot of ask for what goes into a development plan, where it seemed like kind of the site development plan becomes construction drawing plus.
And, and the reason why I feel like that's putting the cart before the horse is primarily, when you, when you think about it from the perspective of a developer. All of that work has to get paid for, and so they're doing all of this work in advance of an actual decision about the use itself. And so, let's say as, as commissioners, you're like, nope, we don't like this, we, we're denying it. All of that money and time and resources is just completely wasted, and so I really see that as how can we be more efficient about getting you what it is that you need right now? So that you can then go through that process and work with you through the construction and, and development review process. But yeah, that's something that I hope in time we can be a little bit more considerate, about just how much effort goes into that.
What great example, you all don't need to see this.
Yeah.
You know, if you understand it, and it's obvious, as a planner looking at plans for years, I still can barely understand how engineers interpret all of these plans. You know, looking at where the utilities are, and the grade underground, and how everything ties together, you know. As a planning commission, you're, you're really looking at site plan details, these first few pages and sheets.
Well, then, once it goes to the planning commission, and you say, I need you to change this, then the downstream effects is just.
I mean, what I've seen a lot of times, planning commissioners, as part of a development site plan, it's generally a covered page that has your certification blocks, your notes. Kind of the required, the base required notes, you know, vesting limitations, if, if your permit's not pulled in a couple of years, and it's expired, and they have to go back through the process. A site plan, sometimes you'll see have a preliminary grading plan, which by calling it preliminary, that means they don't, you know, you'll do the finals part of the construction drawing set. But it helps to inform why landscaping needs to be a certain way, or where burmy, or screen walls need to be placed, especially with perimeter parking month as adjacent to roadways. The site layout itself, I think, trying to see if they actually had a site, just a site layout that looked like it included landscaping on all those old pages.
I assume we should go out there and count their trees. See if it matches up, see what fell through, or what's died over time.
You know, just as an aside, there was a, a high-growth community in Texas, which is interesting, and they were, strangely didn't like growth. And so, they would go out and measure the gauge of trees as a, as a onus to deny, just to make development. And so, I mean, I'm not, you get into that level, but that, you know, I mean, that, I mean, if you're, like, for some communities, I mean, they use it. To help support growth, or to fight, and, and you, I mean, you can really muck up the process for folks, and so it.
Well, that's.
And that's what'll try to help.
That really goes to the heart of a lot of what this is about, is how do, first of all, planning staff? And then, second of all, we commissioners, approach a given proposal? Do we approach it from the perspective of, I'm gonna figure out how to deny this? Or do we approach it from the perspective of, let's see if we can make this work?
Right.
I mean, in terms of interpreting the code, I've heard you, Jeff, I think, Alex too, but you especially. Be very creative in providing sort of historical references and interpretations of the code to make something work.
Yeah.
If, if you had come at that project, or if you just had a bad attitude, if you'd come with that project with, I'm gonna figure out how to, how to scotch this thing. You wouldn't have come up with all those creative interpretations, and so that's all very subjective. And that, that's probably something that we gotta be very careful about in every case.
And it depends on what it's about, I mean, I think that, and unfortunately, you have to, you have to look at this from the perspective of being as objective as you can, but also. You are a member of this community, you have your own bias about things, and you bring that with you everywhere, that impacts your decision-making. And so, I think if, if, if it's a question of, you know, if it's another Dollar General. You may have particular things in mind, like, I wanna make sure that we get better architecture, or I would like to see better screening, or I would like to see more efficient parking, or. I don't think that the site plan really works very well, and so you could be taking it from those angles. But if you're like, I don't want this use in my community, that's where things, where that kind of thing becomes tricky, because we're gonna look at the development code and say. This is an allowed use, we can't deny it on the basis of use. What we have to do is make sure that it meets all these other requirements of our development code, which by the way, is cha, is challenging, because it's really ambiguous. Which is why I think Jeff, why the company with all these creative interpretations are just looking back at precedent, because it's, some things are just really tough to interpret. My hope is, is that when we get to our new code, there will not be that lack of clarity, at least to the greatest extent possible. So that you at least have a little bit of cover when you need to make decisions, but. I would say that overall, my interpretation, in my, my opinion of the Dollar General store is, we need a better code, because there are things about that project. In terms of aesthetic, site planning, landscape, that is problematic for me.
Yeah, to that point, there's, there are certain zoning standards that are very set in stone, your, your density and your building heights, and so forth. But there's, there's some like the landscaping standards, if you have a site that has a tremendous number of mature trees, you can kind of factor that into their landscaping plan. And get a little bit creative with that type of thing, definitely.
And I will tell you that my role as well, as a planner, is to get a developer to give us the absolute best project that they can possibly get. And that means that I am gonna push things, that's my job, and I'll push it a little bit. So if I don't like their expression, I'm gonna say, you know, I think we'd really like to see something else like this. Or, I'm gonna pull up some examples of the Dollar General store in five other communities in Colorado, and it looks like here, 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 and here. You didn't seem to have a problem with this thing, we would like that same thing here. And that's, that's our job, is to get the best possible product to you, while still keeping our code in mind. You don't have to do that, you may have your own opinions about it, you can certainly bring any of that to the table when you're having the discussion in the, in the hearing. But from our perspective, at least from my perspective, is, I don't want what's gonna come right off the factory floor, and I don't want what you're gonna give to any town USA. Estes Park is special, and we need to make sure that we're looking for this, this, and this, and what those are is another question.
Well, I just chuckle because I've been in situations where you say that, and they're like, we just, we can't, we just have to do it exactly, and then you're like, well, you have these other examples. You did it there, well, that was different.
Oh yeah, oh, and that's, and we get the same thing, Safeway's, Consover, Walmart, gas stations.
But my view on that is though, that's more of a negotiation between the staff and the applicant.
Yeah.
When it gets to our level, I, I think it's more of, and I hate to look at this a little bit, but it is checking boxes. It is a little bit more of how, how it applies to the code or not, and, and applying that consistently, and that's where the creativity can get you in trouble a little bit. Being someone that brought plans to planning commissions, and this month, all they care about is landscaping. And two months later, I bring the next plan in, and all we're talking about is parking. What just happened? That, that having consistency in how we look at things and apply those standards is extremely important to me, from having seen it not done in the beginning.
That, that therein, I think you, is the biggest challenge in, in, because I, I do think predictability and consistency are important. If you wanna support the kind of development that I think you, believe you need in the community, cause you don't want, I mean, as, as much as sometimes you wanna discourage stuff that may not be the best. You also wanna be in a position of courage, you know, particularly with the situation with housing, right? So I, I, and, so I, I think your point is very well made, and I, I appreciate that perspective, cause I, I know. It is, it is that, that, I mean, developers, I, I, I would, I chuckle a bit because they make money by spending other people's money, and the less money they have to spend on their own. The more money they make, so they'll fight you, it's not personal, I mean, I've learned that the hard way, it's not a personal thing with them. But if you push back, usually they'll find, you know, especially in a community like Estes Park, where you know, the market is at a point where you know they're gonna get a good return. I mean, it's not like some other, you know, you're, the market is strong enough, and there's demand for just about anything, that they'll get a good return. They can take some, a little bit of time and give you quality product, you, you have that luxury here that some communities don't have, so. I, I, I mean, I, I would say use it, respond, use that power responsibly, but I think they'll be afraid to, 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 to kind of use it, cause, cause I do think. You know, I always tell communities, you're in the forever business, I mean, Estes Park's been here for a hundred years, it'll be here for another hundred years, and. You don't wanna be looking at somewhere, your grandkids come look at something, that, and have to explain, why did you approve that, you know, so. So it, so understanding that part of it, I think is important.
Well, it's really feeling like the community character, a lot of times that's part of your vision. With the comp plan, and sometimes there's illustrations, examples, the type of criteria you're looking for, so all that is part of your decision as well.
And that grant sheet discretion.
That is, exactly.
Cause you say, I don't feel like this is actually meeting the community character, and I'd like to see you come back with the CTV, then you would be back.
Dollar, Dollar General, great example, they don't have to build their typical brick wainscot metal above, big yellow sign, they can do it a lot in different ways, and they've done it. But if it's clear upfront, usually that's where simply having good staff, which you do have, is important, because when you have those early conversations with developers and consultants and applicants. You can tell them those expectations, and the best planners out there do that great that night.
And you have to do it early, so the, so the issue is, is that they give you a submittal, and they've already done all this work on it, and you're like, well, I don't really like that, they're gonna say. You should have said that to us six months ago, and so that's really where you have to, have kind of a clear sense of what's our direction, and how willing are we to advocate for that?
So at any stage in the process, do you guys get, as part of any level of the package, preliminary or final? Something resembling a photorealistic rendition of elevations and stuff in context?
It's, you know, what you, we'll see it in plan view, sometimes we'll get cross sessions. Now, as we go into updating our code, we could be asking, so what they call them in other communities, they'll call them like story poles. Where if somebody's proposing to build a, let's say on a mountain, and you don't have a real sense of what that height is, we can require them to actually put poles up on site. That you can clearly see how tall that structure's going to be, and you can analyze it more carefully than if you're just assuming and looking at it, you know, a drawing. Those are things we can do, if I felt really uncomfortable about something, I might ask a developer to just give us that, so that we can include it in the content.
I mean, this is, this is a regular plan elevation, but I've seen, I guess, from big companies who have a lot of money and are pushing hard on something. I mean, they'll take a, they'll take a, I suppose a drone picture or something, the side of the mountain there, and then they'll put their building there, and then the way it's gonna look.
Yeah.
And if that were part of the package, it would certainly, well, if you could assign it, it would make it all feel better.
Well, we, we did the, if you recall with the building, we did the, the unit of the GIS, where you can actually go through and see. I mean, granted, it's not, it's not a photo read, it's the, but it shows what it would look like.
Sure.
I, I will say, one of the things, if you can simplify your code, so you don't require all of the mechanical, that you have a lot more flexi, you have a lot more reception. you have a lot more flexi, you have a lot more reception, receptive audience to making changes, than, you know, if you're doing forty-two pages and you had to hire, you know. So, so that, that, that's something I think put in your best pocket for when you need your code update, to understand those submittals, because that, that'll drive, helps those progress.
I, personal history on this, but from, from our firm, when I was providing this kind of work, we look at how contentious the project was going to be, and if we thought it was going to be that kind of pushback,
Right.
whether it was required or not, then we were providing the photorealistic, to give the community a better sense of, look at that project, and that sort of. But it's not codified, it's not required, but...
It could be.
And it really helps with the big changes, because they're going to come at you with their template, their boilerplate template, and not do the community character aspects. And then if they do a photorealistic, you can be like, well, look at that building there, and that building there, and you're throwing this in our face and everything, so... Because sometimes they, they just have maybe a guy in the region that's kind of the local person, but they could be, have worked with architects back in Chicago or somewhere else, and they don't know the context and the true character.
And they've got prototype, that's taken, I think, exactly, because it's cheap for them to know.
But I, I will say, though, this is a very specific animal. I mean, when you're dealing with credit, net credit tenants and chains, have, are very cookie cutter approaches, like Starbucks, Dollar General, Kink, you know. But I do think, at least my experience at the time we worked with Estes Park, you, you have a lot of other, kind of, I don't call them mom and pop, but very local, that, that I think, in to the extent that you can simplify the front end, because it's a different, you know, I, I think, it'll, it'll make your, it'll make them more, their process simpler for, for them, which I think is as important as it is in how you deal with these kind of chain, you know, these cookie cutter chains as well, so...
Yeah, I mean, a general site plan for something like this, or any other just pad site, probably seven, eighty chains is most of what you need. You know, to cover all of it, including some three D photorealies, because they have to build it when they need all this, or they're building renderings, because they have to use it internally as well. And then construction drawings can be their own animal that follow whatever process is established. Just to make sure, sometimes they overlap, just to make sure it's in the box. But in terms of the development plan, the elevations are something important to look at. This is just the site plan itself, to see, you know, all the dimensional requirements are there, the layout, the parking location, the function, the flow of the site. Pedestrian amenities, pedestrian conditions are a big one. You know, sometimes a site, you might see a bunch of bike racks, or pedestrian amenities included on site, but then the big question is, not so much like, what do they include on site, but how does it tie into the rest of the community? And I've worked with commissions and boards where they'll get into the details of the individual amenities, or little features of the site, dog waste stations, how many of those, where do they be located?
Uber pickup.
That's too much detail. Think of like, okay, is there a dog park nearby? Is this a neighborhood that's going to have a much, like, thinking that badly? Same with like, a site that's maybe on the edge of town, there's no sidewalks or trails up there yet, but there are bike racks and other amenities. Instead of questioning why they're adding good, good amenities or those details to the site, it's more of a, well, how are they getting, are they having to do the off-site proofs that tie in? Or is that a town CIP project that's coming up in the near future or working in collaborations? So thinking of those kind of questions when you're analyzing some of the site details, just how it fits into the overall scheme of the community.
Josh, you just spark a thought that I wanted maybe... So in contemplating this, and I, like, I notice, it's part of the site plan, there's the bike path that kind of goes, that kind of is adjacent to it. I mean, when you're looking at some of these plans, and you, what flexibility does it suggest to have with the town to, you know, if they say, okay, we'll ease up your requirements on a number of trees, but we want you to build the bike path. We want you to complete this section of it, or we want you to do, put on a bigger sidewalk, or overbuild the sidewalk, or some other public amenity that may not, that exceeds the requirements, in exchange for, what, what is the, do you, can you speak to that kind of authority?
Me?
Yeah.
In terms of Estes, I don't know, Estes is a specific policy there.
I think generally, you know, when it comes down to, if it's a public investment, and it was something that's within the review of public works, and it's, if they reviewed the site plan, they've looked at, you know, kind of the bigger picture, and they say, we really need that to do, kind of go above and beyond. That's where we could be negotiating with them to say, can the town pay for a portion of this? Or if you will dedicate this right of way, then the town will build it, or something along those lines. I mean, that's what we do in the development review process, and just through that negotiation, I mean, things like that that come up. And then the planner will bring that up, and bring it to the attention of the commissioners during the review. But generally, you know, it's, I kind of look at it as a yes and, like, we want really good landscaping, and we want you to tie into the, to the trails, and so I start from there. We want you to do all of it, and let's see how we can get there.
I think that's a great approach. I've worked places, so I always do have a similar approach, that developers start here with their base formula, their base costs, is where they want to be. As a community, we should be starting with here, like, this is all our expectation. And I've worked places where there are reviewers that will start, oh, well, you know, it's, it's not required, it's just highly encouraged. It's like, well, right there, you just gave me your ammo.
Yeah.
Even if the plan doesn't say it's required, I start out and say, yeah, it's expected that you're going to do this. And then, you know, like you say, well, where's the issue then? I can point it out. I kind of am creative with, you know, how you emphasize and how you push things, so that way you can come more to a common ground. I'm like, if you were to start here, you don't have a lot to negotiate with. Or if you're here, you have a whole range that you can work on together to get a great product, because you're not going to get everything that you always asked for of every tenant, and, you know, mom and pops are limited to their budget, and franchises are just difficult at times. So it's, where can you come in that big old ground, and how far, what things are, you want to get well, they're going to get a little, to kind of build that best production.
And I think usually, my experience is, especially in communities that are, where there's desirable investment, which I would consider, is, you know, developers, they take pride in their work too. I mean, they, they, they want stuff to look nice, and so a, a, as long as you can, as you're upfront and you're, can be work efficient, I don't necessarily think fast is a bad term, but if you can work with efficiency and certainty about, I, I think generally, they'll be appreciative. If you have a develop, because some of the, I mean, I know it's a little, it's, when you have a developer comes and says, we just want to do this, and we don't care, and we're going to push it through, it, it mean, they're not really interested in the community for the long term. They have a four-year threshold, or seven-year, they're going to build it, sell it, get out, and go to the next community. And if it falls down, or if it's not, you know, because I, I do think, you know, when you look at something like a Dollar General, I mean, this is a very specific example, it's really not thinking, it's thinking about, how is that building going to be used fifteen years from now, when Dollar General moves on? Or what, what, you know, can it be repurposed for something different? Is the, is the landscaping, parking, circulation adequate so that it can be easily adapted? You know, so that's twenty, thirty years from now, when, you know, when, I don't know, when they're beaming everything to us, you know, when we don't, what else can it be used for, right? Or, because I, I, like I said, I mean, I always take it to heart that we're, when you work in the public sector, you're in the forever business, and so it, it's a little different mindset than a developer who takes return thresholds over four and seven, ten years.
And we also don't look at, and we're not aware of their performance. So we don't know, when a, you know, when a developer is looking at all the costs plus all the revenue, and, you know, at the top is like the cream of what they're going to get, they don't share any of that with us. And that's okay, we don't ask for it. I don't think we really want to know, because I think sometimes we would be very shocked to see what that discrepancy is for like, community benefit versus return on investment for an applicant. But I think what, what you want is your staff to go back for the community. Because we want to be, and often, you know, we can, it can be disparaging, it can be challenging when you're trying to kind of keep that long view, and I want to know that this building is actually going to be a good addition to this community over time, instead of, well, you know, we need a Dollar General. We may need it, but let's try to also think about its, its relationship with the community too, so...
On your unique up here, you're separated from a lot of other communities, you get down to the front range, and you've all seen that, you've been out there, I mean, people are competing for the big boxes, giving away all these incentives for that big box in twenty years when it's gone, because the building is, you know, how, you know, they don't have the building. Moved on, that building's just going to sit there, and it can't be reused for anything. The community can't do much with it, because they just gave all those tax breaks to them over the years. And so they're stuck in that one boat, same with the housing market down there. See, like, there's a handful of builders, especially in the little front range area, and there are quick builders, build out in a month and a half. And you know those aren't going to be your fifty, hundred-year homes that you're looking to historically designate or anything else, because they have no character. It's just, you know, it's that idea that if, if I, you know, if you were blindfolded and dropped off in a neighborhood, would you know you were in this community? Or would you know you were just in a typical yarn wool neighborhood, or, you know, a treehouse neighborhood, or American neighborhood? You know, all these big national builders, so...
Josh, I think maybe at this point, probably, is it running long?
Yeah, we're, I just want to make, you know, reset to a five, so people can help, because they got a business to run, or dinner to get here, or whatever it is. I just wanted to point out these other opportunities, your staff are well aware of these as well. The American Land Associations of the National Chapter, they have some different training programs that you can purchase, and you buy, and some videos and stuff. They're kind of general, higher-level information, so not specific to your unique circumstances, but some good background. The Department of Local Affairs, they usually does a planning refresh, refresher workshop in different regions, sometimes come together to have them come up and do a wild one. That gets into some meaning, etiquette, ethics, Robert's Rules of Order comes up there. It's a short workshop, it's a, it's a good one for newer commissioners, or if you start to see some turnover, and you get some fresh new members that have never been on board, or something, that builds a beneficial. And then, of course, I'll plug our local APA chapters, since I am a board member. There are a lot of great sessions at the annual conference. We always do a conference in the fall, and I believe you guys usually budget to have a couple commission members and staff go do that, which is great, fantastic. We've worked over the years to get a lot of different types of sessions before. If you went for one year, it might be all transportation-focused or something else, and now it's just such a mix. So we have some stuff on rentals, housing, out communities, and which ends my push, because I'm just a local person, to all these meetings, and involved with all the session reviews, is one, trying to get new ideas out there, and ideas that are actually applicable for the communities, things that communities can take back and actually try and handle that. Because a lot of times you go to those, and it's a, a big design firm or another firm showcasing their projects, and this is what we did, look at what we did, it's so fantastic. It's like, oh, what were the lessons, like, what, what should you watch out for? So we're getting a lot more of those kinds of sessions, interactive, creative, and applicable for out communities, small communities, broad range, across the board. So definitely my little plug for that, so...
And then I also have these, and I will apologize right up front, that these are old. I think they're from twenty thirteen, but we found them useful. They are general enough, but I think, please take a look, and if, if you find it useful, and I actually have another book from that book stock, and I'll bring that, I think I'd love to bring it out.
This is before Randy, because...
Yeah, I think these are from twenty first.
Yeah.
Because if it was Randy, it'd be...
Yeah. This is helpful, it's just really general stuff, but useful, and, you know, especially if there are terms that you're not familiar with, or just bigger picture stuff, I think it does a pretty good job of talking about some of that. And let's definitely talk about the planning conference coming up later this fall. I think at the minimum, I'd like to send two of us to go to that, and so let's talk about that, because we could just rotate year after year. I think it's helpful, but...
It's in, it's in scale this year, so...
Yeah. It's a hero, I know it's an important place to go.
True.
Especially in the fall.
Yeah, so ugly.
Before we wrap, for better or worse, here's a little bit of my process when I'm going through our package when they arrive at us. And it sometimes creates the problems that I create, and I recognize that. But, and we all come from different places in, in how we approach what things do, and I appreciate that. And I come a little bit more from that, that technical side, because this is what I was doing. But if it's a subdivision that comes before us, well, whatever it is, I open up to, it's chapter three, and it'll list, here's the subdivision review, here's the development plan review, and what the requirements are. And if it's development plan, it's going to say, go to chapter five. Every project I get, I read that entire chapter again, and look at, okay, if we're in this zoning district, here's the setbacks. I know what's the plan, are those the setbacks actually going on? And I go through every piece of that code, and that's tedious, I try to do it every time. That's what staff is doing, and I know that's their role. I feel that's hard. I think that, that really, if we're going to approve a plan, we should understand that it checks all those boxes, and we should verify that ourselves. That's a lot. I don't necessarily expect to do it all the time, but I'm trying to. And I, I think we should...
I agree. That's what this was about.
But it's, it's understanding what this looks like, but then applying it to the code. I think that's, we talked about it in general terms, but I'm, I'm literally reading every paragraph of that section.
So we...
To see if it applies.
And I think that, that's really admirable, and I think what we can do in the future, if you want, we can pull up a, a, you know, past project and go through the code and talk about it, if that's something that you would like to do. We can, you know, whatever you make questions about, if they're, you know, just general, I don't, I still don't know how to do this, or, you know, help me walk through the code and understand it better, we can do that too. We can break it down and try to demystify it a bit, because I know it is, it is complicated, and I've looked at a lot of codes.
Once you figure it out, then maybe it goes, you know...
Exactly, so I only know enough to be dangerous, I've done that before, so I don't, have not memorized everything. I know Randy was like, oh, that's section five point two, so it's like, how did you do that? And so I'll do that for our next code, but not for this one.
No, I mean, that was the original Thursday morning meeting, was me coming here at seven-thirty and sitting down with Randy, and I was going chapter by chapter and saying, okay, I reviewed chapter five, I've got these four questions. And, you know, that's what, that's where it started, and then, then it turned more into kind of, I think, more strategic visioning and stuff like that. Yeah, I, I can still use a lot of, you know, measure I want to invest all of that time now, because our code's going to change.
But it is not simple stuff.
It would also help us understand what needs changing a little bit.
That's true, that is...
Yeah.
I have to say, I'm not sure I agree that it makes sense for all of us to go through each and every little detail to kind of check what the planners work, because at some point, it's important to have people who are less focused on the trees and more focused on the forest.
I, I fully acknowledge that sometimes I create problems doing that.
I think if we have a nice healthy combination, that's excellent too. You can be looking out for the forest, he's looking at the trees. Because really what that guarantees is that everybody is, that there's a comprehensive analysis and evaluation of this project. So that's okay to do that, and if you have questions about that, that's also what we're here for. But you have to say, though, that when Matt picked up some issues from the Golden Leaf subdivision, that was really good, because there were some inconsistencies with it, that Jeff was able to go back and clarify and say, this is where this was coming from, now I can actually give you the specifics that you're asking for. So it's okay to, you know, to challenge us, if, if, if that's needed, I'll always say, do it before the meeting, just so we could, we could be prepared for it. But if it comes up, it comes up, and we're going to deal with it as best we can. Thank you so much, thank you a lot for coming.
I love working with you guys. We're lucky to have you.
Sorry, I have to rush, I have to go.
Well, thank you, I guess, we could do... That's what mine fell over to, it was like, well, clearly somebody's going to check it this out.